... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you and welcome. Jack, you're gonna do the honors of the roll call?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Peretta?
Here.
Marinowski?
Here.
Vandermeer?
Eskin?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Smith? Corley?
Here.
Capodanno?
Here.
All right, six present.
Well, everyone, thanks for coming out today. Kathy, can you hear me if I speak from here? Is this good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, for those of you who know me or work with me, um, you know that truly I believe that the city of Lockport is the best city in the southwest suburbs, hand down. I truly believe that. And, um, one of the biggest problems we face, though, is that not everybody else knows that. And so, we spent the last year, you know, with initiatives from the administration level, hard work of the staff, and support and input from our council, to really try to change that dynamic. And we tried to change that dynamic because we believe that we have more assets and more unrealized potential in Lockport than any other area. And so, we've done many things in that time. We've, uh, you know, we've worked hard to, you know, get our retail centers out of foreclosure. There were two of them that were really dragging us down, and both of those are out of foreclosure. We've done the work now over this past year to get the message out of who we are. Last year, when I went to the ICSC conference, which is a conference where all the retail brokers go, you know, they barely even, they knew where Lockport was, but they were kinda like, "Oh yeah, it's that place." Um, and then they would ask me, "Now, how many housing starts do you have?" And, you know, they just, there wasn't a lot of interest. This year, as we go back, we're a lot more prepared. This year, we've had, you know, a retail coach that has given us a true trade area map, true demographics, true, um, voids in the retail areas. We've got commute times. We've got both of their areas out of foreclosure, and they have new brokers and new representation. Uh, we have housing starts have doubled because we've lowered our tap-on fees. Um, and now, I know most of the brokers by name. And so, we have a lot more, uh, a lot more muscle when we go back. And, you know, we've done the things that they have felt that have kept us off the radar. You know, on top of that, we've chosen to invest in ourselves with a $48 million capital improvement plan, thanks to Amy and staff and, you know, the council's input. Um, that's a big deal. And it also sends a message out there to retailers and investors that we're willing to invest in ourselves. So, those are very big things that we've done. We've done some property acquisition in the downtown to turn it around and promote it ourselves. Um, you know, we've created many things that we've, uh, that we've done. But regardless, that's all fine and great, but what truly makes a city great is its people. And, you know, one of the things that happens all the time, our people come to me and they have ideas and things that they want to do, and I, I fully support these things. Because if it's not for the people of Lockport, what really good is anything else? We can have, you know, commercial areas, industrial areas, retail centers, the downtown, but if there's not people who love it and want to be here, and just the livability of Lockport is where we want it to be, what's the sense? And so, tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize some of the volunteers that we have had working so hard, you know, for the past year and a half since I've been here, and longer. There's people here tonight that have been, you know, doing things such as the Lockport Resource Center and the Food Pantry have been going on for many years. But some of the things that are new this year, too, I also wanted to recognize. So, not just being able to encourage and say thank you to the people that have been working hard for years, but also to the new residents and new people who've come forward and wanted to do things, um, which is very important as well. So, tonight, I'd ask those folks who've come here to be recognized for volunteers, please come on up and, and kind of line up here if you don't mind. I would like to recognize you and also give you a little something as well. So, please, I know everybody's, please, come on up. Come on up here, Patty. What you guys have done is great.
Oh, really?
And I'll just kinda go through some of the projects that have been happening. For instance, we have Patty Pastore. Come on up here, Patty, please. Patty, you know, she's a longtime resident, and, uh, you know, many of the people here in Lockport have roots in Asiago in northern Italy. Um, and so, she's like, "Can we become sister cities with Asiago?" See, in fact, they have relatives. Who's on the council?
Uh, he's on the council.
He's on the council. They have the council members in Asiago that are related to Patty. He's a cousin, and it's very fun. And so, we've had conversations, and Patty and Candace have worked just tremendously hard to set this up. And, um, we're probably gonna do a signing, an official signing with the city, probably next week. They're gonna do a dry run tomorrow. Uh, but it's through the hard work of Patty that's gonna make that come to fruition. And we really look forward to it, and there's so many opportunities, whether it's student exchanges, whether it's working with our park district who always, you know, does overseas trips, to actually have an overseas trip that's to northern Italy, that we can go visit people in Asiago, and there's even commercial opportunities as well. So, we're very excited about that. I just wanna say thank you, Patty, for all you do. And so, I've had these hats made up for all of these. They're just for volunteers, okay? So, these are very special, and every time we volunteer for something, you get a little pin. So, here's a hat and a pin, and thank you so much. And please make sure you give one to Candace as well for all her hard work. So, thank you, Patty. I appreciate it. One of the things that we, you know, one of the things we've explored is trying to find ways to utilize some of our, uh, our buildings downtown. Uh, especially, there's some buildings north of the Gaylord that we have an eye on that are just very dilapidated. We, we had looked at, uh, the council and I kind of explored through a business called Art Space, um, a way to turn it into, you know, maybe it's like an artist loft, or perhaps it's artist workspace. We're still kind of exploring through it to see if it could work. But one of the things that came out of that meeting was, uh, the Artist Guild of Lockport. Ed Smith came up to me and he says, "Hey, we'd really like to," you know, we had all these artists in one room from the city who were kind of interested in this project. And while they're all in one room, it's like, "Hey, why don't we get together and start forming a guild?" And that's exactly what Ed did. He's done a tremendous job. I mean, watching it come, I've never seen anything come together so fast and get such support. And so, I really wanted to thank Ed for that. It's wonderful. I mean, you guys have meetings once a month, you have, you know, speakers come in. It's been very exciting. And so, um, I, you know, know you guys are gonna continue to do great things, and I'm really thankful for it. So, thanks and appreciate it. I have to save the Spurlings for last. So, you know, I wanted to bring the, uh, Renee and Mark, please come on up here for a second. Now, this, Renee and Mark are just, you know, they're newer residents, but when they came here, like many of us, you know, who come into Lockport or look at Lockport or lived here, we all, we all see the downtown. And we just say, "Man, there's so much going on here." And, you know, I get a call from Renee, she says, "Well, you know, can't we, what can we do with the Roxy?" I'm like, "Well, you know, it's not really ours to do something with, uh, but I'll tell you what, if you and some of the other people that have called me about the Roxy, if you guys want to get together, form a committee, call it the Roxy Group, if you want to come up with a viable plan, something that I can then take to Trinity Services, who owns the building," I said, "I'm happy to facilitate that." And so, they did. And once again, just the dynamic leadership of Renee and the Roxy Group, um, they just, uh, came up with a nice plan. We went to Trinity Services with it, and we said, "Hey, what do you guys think of, uh, you know, doing something on a Saturday night?" It's a very underutilized building, and Trinity loved the idea. And so, over the summer, we showed three movies there, um, as kind of a trial run to see if this could work. And Trinity truly is excited about it now. And then now, they're actually willing to come back and put some money into the building. You know, they've kind of, it's kind of been on the outskirts of what they do, but now they've got their focus back on it, and they're willing to put the money back into the building and see if we can continue to do things like this on Saturdays or rent it out and such. So, once again, tremendous job that the Roxy Group has done. And there's some other members here, uh, but they're kind of mixed in also with other groups. So, I can kinda, like Bob Morris is here and such. So, we'll make, we'll make sure we recognize them. But for right now, just say thank you to Renee and Mark for all their hard work in making that happen. Kathy, that's, that's your primary group. So, I always mix everybody up with our group, too, because a lot of times I cross over. Thank you, Kathy, for all your hard work. Anybody else from the Roxy Group person? Sorry, I apologize. Yes, our high school man. I really apologize for that. I know you've done a lot of work in making that happen as well, so my community's people will. Another group that has been around for a long time has been Main Street. And, you know, they do so much, everything from Clean Sweep and, you know, organizing people to go downtown. And, you know, I always say, it lets people know and proves that folks have a true heart for Lockport. Because you wouldn't be able to organize a bunch of people to go clean up, you know, uh, you know, the Lockport Square Plaza, right? But people will certainly volunteer to come forward and clean up the downtown because we have a heart for it. It's our face. It's, it's what makes us uniquely special. It's what makes us different from any other towns in the southwest suburbs. And Main Street has done more for that than any other organization. And there's, you know, uh, the Spurlings, there's, uh, Rosemary Winters and, when he was here, we miss him tremendously, um, Tina Keller. Uh, who else is here from Main Street? Bob Morris is here. Come on, all the Main Street people, come on up. Come on up. All the way up. They're so passionate. They work so hard. Come on up here. I gotta, I want everybody to see you. And I gotta give you your hats, and I don't wanna.
Tom. Come on, Tom.
All right. So, I mean, more has been done by Main Street. They help facilitate so many things. Yes, see, there's cross-members here. We have Renee on, on Main Street as well. You only get one hat, though. That's right. So, um, I, I mean, I can't even go into all the things that Main Street does. I mean, their Bike and Dine has just been spectacular, and it's done exactly what we try to make it do. It's to bring people from outside of Lockport to come here and see the potential of Lockport, and, uh, and they've done a tremendous job. There's been the Bike and Dine, there's the Clean Sweep, uh, 1836 event, which is wonderful. It's a wonderful fundraiser for, uh, which helps pay for all the flowers and all the things at Clean Sweep. What are some of the other events going on? There's just so many things. If, if they're not directly involved in something, they're helping with something. So, I just wanna say thank you so much and appreciate all your hard work. And I had to drag them here. You know how hard it was to get them to come up here? They're just, they like to be in the background. So, thank you. Lisa, why don't you come up here for a second? I don't know where to put Lisa. Lisa's everywhere. So, um, she helps with Main Street, she's helped with Summer Art Series, which I'll talk about in a second, she's, uh, the chamber work that she does. So, we'll just bring you out special. So, thank you so much for having me, Lisa. I appreciate it. About the Summer Art Series, a lot of the people that were already up here were involved in that. But Wendy, why don't you come up with the girls? And I could speak to that directly here. You know, a couple of things that happened this year, um, that were, was important to me, as we've tried to get Lockport on the map, in the minds of, you know, the retailers, investors, and even people that want to live here. You know, as we get housing starts up and we try to fill out some of these half-finished subdivisions that we have all over the city, um, you know, we want people to move here. And I don't want people to move here just because it's like, "Yeah, I got relocated to someplace called Lockport because of my job." I want people to move here because it's like, "Lockport is cool. I have been there, I love it, and when we decided to move, that's where we wanted to go." And so, making sure that Lockport is known is one of the things that we started this year as an initiative, was, uh, the Summer Art Series. And a group of wonderfully talented people, including my wife who chaired it, Jerry Adelman, Rosemary Winters, John Lustig from the Illinois State Museum, uh, who else was on there?
Mitzi.
Mitzi Blanchard was there. She here tonight? Did she make it? Okay, Mitzi was there. Uh, Tina Keller was part of that. Um, so, did I miss anybody? Okay, that was the, that was the crew that put that together. And they did a wonderful job. And it was really about having some public art that was out throughout the summer. All of it was fundraised, you know, all of it was from private donations that paid for the big steampunk Lincoln and the gears and, uh, and even the Riverweaves. It was all out there from private donations. And, um, it really, it did its job. Its job was, A, to do a fun event for us, but also to be able to market Lockport wide. Because it's, you know, look, I can, and, you know, we as a council, we put money into advertising Lockport this year. We spent, you know, almost $40,000 putting ads and billboards all over Chicagoland. And, um, you know, it's pretty hard to say, "Come to Lockport and shop in our downtown," right? When there's not a lot to shop. We're gonna change that, we're working on it, but right now, we have to play to our strengths. And so, we played to, you know, the beautiful public landing, the Illinois State Museum, the Riverwalk, and all these kind of things. And we put artwork that was out there, um, so people could come see it. There was a wonderful gala that they put on. I know some of the council members were able to attend. Um, but I would tell you what, man, when people came to that gala, they came as far away as, uh, Madison, Wisconsin, from Indianapolis, all downtown Chicago, and it was exactly what it was intended to be. And I can't tell you how many people would come into that building or come into the downtown for the pop-up shopping that they organized and say, "I had no idea. I had no idea this was down here. This is really cool." So, it exactly did what its job was meant to be. And so, I want to say thank you. And my daughters are up here because they deserve hats, too, because I could tell you, and it's no different from any of these volunteers, when it came to the Summer Art Series, our living room was filled with a bunch of things that these guys were painting and decorating for decor, and they did a lot of work. And so, um, I want to make sure I recognize all the ladies in my house and say thank you. And then, of course, we've got, um, people that have been working hard for the city of Lockport for years. Oh, come on up here. This is, uh, oh, Haranda County. Come on up. I'm so sorry. You needed to recognize me for the Summer Art Series. You know, one of the things that happened in pop-up shopping, too, was, um, uh, some of the business owners gave up their, their, uh, retail space so that we could have pop-up shopping, which is kind of temporary thing for that day. And I wanted to make sure, I said, "Thank you," from the business owners. Uh, we had a number of them invited, but it's, uh, it's Haranda?
Yes, I think it was Horetta.
Horetta. Horetta County, which you guys, it's right next to the People's Cleaners. Um, she was so generous in opening up her building, and it was one of the most, uh, and so, I want to say thank you for that as well. So, thank you, appreciate it. And then, um, you know, I want to kind of save some of the hardest workers for last, and that is, um, you know, folks from, uh, the Lockport Food Pantry. You know, Bruce Davis has led that crew, and, and these are people that I don't even know yet, and, uh, to my shame. And so, I need to go over there and spend a little bit of time and meet people so I get to know everybody by name there as well. Because, you know, this is when, this is an internal, you know, kind of looking inward where we, it's a benevolence, where we help people in Lockport. And so, um, this is hugely important. And so, I wanted to say thank you. And Bruce, why don't you come up? Did you want to say a few words about the, uh, was there somebody you wanted to speak to it?
Sure. Come on up, folks.
We've got about forty. Forty volunteers.
Go ahead, speak to them.
I'm the board member, and I've been working with Fish Pantry for about thirty-three years. Seems like a long time, and I keep saying, "Well, this is gonna be my last year." But I don't know what I'd do if I didn't have the Food Pantry. These volunteers are wonderful. I have absolutely wonderful volunteers, forty altogether. I've got twelve of them here tonight. But I thank you for inviting us, and, uh, anytime you want to stop in and see the place, you're more than welcome to stop in. We'd like to have you.
Thank you, Virginia. Appreciate that. Thank you so much for all that you do, and, uh, of course, you guys.
Thank you.
Like I said, Ed, definitely can make my way over there and say hi to everybody. Bruce the donation. Yes. Well, talk about the donations that is important, if you want, like what you guys look for, please.
The money is valuable, but food is a priority. We do get the Northern Illinois food bank, we purchase twice a month, and that keeps our expenses down rather than trying to buy it in town, although we, uh, we have very generous Walmart, Jewel, Evercards, and now the New Myers are donating to us weekly. And we do appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you again, folks. Appreciate all your hard work. Folks, if you don't know, this is Jim Miles, the man that I've been talking about. He doesn't have to present.
Yeah, behalf of Lockport Boost, John, the president, Bruce Davis is the administrator. Uh, we've got five hundred dollars to the Food Pantry, so. That's it. Does anybody here from the Lockport Resource Center?
Uh, are they here tonight? Renan O'Shaughnessy tonight? Okay.
Mayor, you'll give it to them, right?
Yes, we will.
Five hundred dollars. Appreciate it. The city worked real well. We had this fundraiser event on the fifth and sixth of September, and police department of the city worked really well. I'm proud of being assisted here. Been on the police for over twenty-five years, and I'm proud of all you guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Hello, Mr. Benson. Renee, are you here?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, come on up, you guys. Reno, Bill. You guys are standing in the back. I didn't, I didn't categorize you, so I apologize. Come on up.
Ron doesn't seem.
Oh, Bill, there you go, come on. All right, Reno Caniva, right? This is like a fixture in Lockport. No, nobody knows more about Lockport than Reno Caniva.
Brother Ron.
Yeah. It's funny, when I was in the office. He doesn't want, he doesn't want the attention.
And he ran out the back door, and he's like, "Oh, my brother Reno's here." Yeah, so, me and Ben got trapped. No, just kidding. Reno's done a wonderful, he does so many things. You know, one thing I specifically wanted to point out, though, was his time that he spent with the, the Lockport Choir that he put together. They came out and they did some songs at Flag Day, and, uh, we want to continue that as well. I just really want to say thank you for all that you do, you know, very much so. So, I know he couldn't bring the whole choir here because they gave him short notice. He's also. Yep, well, history of Deloitte has to be very interesting. A lot of weird facts about it that you're probably about. I think they're just wonderful. So, thank you so much. Yes, of course.
I think we have a wonderful mayor. Let's give him a hand.
When are the word puts others' things, Bill, on besides the fifth hole of the pack? Oh, yeah, Bill does. So, we had him up here, but Jody said, "Make sure you say something special for Bill." And, you know, like I said, it's the residents like Bill that make all the difference. So, thank you, because he's one of these guys that does many things. So, appreciate all the hats that you wear. Okay, appreciate it. And, you know, Bill Maloney has done, you know, he's always has input for us, and it's, and a lot of times, it's give you commercial stuff, like nobody knows more about railroads and rail yards, and so, Bill's always calling me with information and input and insights. He works hard to get us another metro station, or another line in our metro. And then, that's Bill doing that on his own initiative, and that stuff is huge, and he's been invaluable to us for that. So, Bill, I want to say thank you for that and many other things, so. Miss that showed up for this? Okay. Um, I do want to bring the chief up, though, for Lockport Love. Please come on up here, Terry. Yeah. One of the things I asked the chief when he came on board was to make sure that, um, our police force was a force that, um, not only continues the wonderful protection that they do for us, but also is, reaches out into the community in such a way that, you know, I wanted to make sure every resident knew an officer's name, and not just because they got pulled over, right? But because, you know, the officers have outreach, and they, they go into businesses and they say hello. And, uh, he's certainly done that, but he's even gone above and beyond that. One of the things Terry did was he started Lockport Love, where, um, all the proceeds from their fundraisers, whether they're motorcycle rides or other events that he's, uh, put together, all the money goes right back into Lockport families. And so, I want to say thank you so much for organizing that, Terry, making that happen, so. All right, and then lastly, but not least, um, I want to recognize, uh, our council members. Because while they may not be technically volunteers because they get paid $500 a month, believe me, they make a lot more money working at Starbucks and get a lot less grief. And so, um, I want to say thank you for all that you do as well, so. You guys are full uniforms now.
Thank you, yeah.
But Mayor, I rarely ever wear hats.
Put it on.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
All right, guys, I appreciate that. So, I just, again, thank you for everyone, and appreciate everyone else who's here for other things, uh, putting up with a few minutes of that. But I just think it's so important because it truly, this is where the real true change happens in the city of Lockport, is by the people getting involved and just, they, too, knowing it's the best city in the southwest suburbs. So, thank you again, everyone. Anybody dropped a necklace or a bracelet? I have it up here. So, check your wrists. Okay. All right, so moving along with our meeting tonight, we've got, uh, the city clerk's report. What do you got, Jack?
Thanks. So, two items, uh, tonight. We have CC1, which is the release of executive session meeting minutes, the date from, uh, 1990 through December of 1994. Then we also have. No action.
Uh, you're gonna take action at the city council.
At the council meeting, okay.
Yep, that sounds good.
All right, so that's, those are in your packet for your review?
Consent, yep.
Perfect. Now, CC2 is a notice for public, um, notification that essentially, if a resident in the city of Lockport is interested in running in the April 7, 2015 Consolidated General Election, petitions shall be made available for the April 7, 2015 Consolidate Election, which will be for one alderperson, for a four-year term for each, for each of the four wards in the city of Lockport, beginning, uh, Tuesday, September 23, 2014, in the city clerk's office, Central Square Building. Uh, the city clerk's office hours are 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then, the filing period for said petition shall be between December 15 to December 22, 2014. And on the last day, the 22nd, the clerk's office shall remain open until 5:00 p.m. So, if you have any questions, please forward them onto the clerk's office.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll jump on down to, uh, Ron.
Yes, I, the first thing on my agenda, Mayor, is ordinance 14028. This is an ordinance that will establish a special service area for, uh, Lago Vista Phases Three and Five. In August of this year, we had, we passed an ordinance proposing, uh, the establishment of a special service area for Phases Three and Five. And to establish a special service area, you need a public hearing. And that public hearing will take place on October, uh, October 1st, uh, at the next city council meeting. And then, after that hearing, if everything is, goes right, uh, we will most likely pass a special service area for, uh, Phases Three and Five of Lago Vista. You know, this is a dormant special service area. Lot, uh, Phases, uh, One and Two already have a special service area. This only becomes effective should, uh, the homeowners associations of those respective, uh, phases go out of, uh, business. It, it's kind of a safety valve in case that those homeowners association no longer function. This would impose a levy on the residents so that the common areas, uh, could be maintained by those residents. Phases One and Two already are part of the special service area, and they have this backup plan. So, we're just implementing, uh, for Phases Three and Five, which is, is growing. They're not completely, uh, completely half a population at this point, but it's, it's appropriate that we do this. So, it, we, we've had, in the last about thirteen years, uh, established a number of special service areas, and luckily, we haven't had to institute them. There is no levy of taxes, uh, by any of the ones that we, we have promulgated. It's, it's, it's a backup, as I said. So, uh, we will be having a public hearing on October 1st and hopefully, uh, passing, uh, the ordinance establishing those special service areas.
All right, thoughts, questions, discussion? Everybody okay? All right, is this something that we have to pass then at the next council? You want it as an action item?
It'll be an action item, yes, a public hearing.
All right, we'll do that.
And then, the next thing I have with, with Pam is, uh, the New Avenue Annexation Agreement and, and the rezoning of that property. And Pam, may go first for the rezoning.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, Dan and Beverly Price, they own the property located at 15341 New Avenue. Um, they have submitted a petition for annexation as well as a rezoning of their 9.2-acre property to M2 General Manufacturing. The property is located next to where the, uh, Style Line Cabinet Place burnt, and they're seeking annexation because when the facility was in operation, uh, they had well access. Now that the facility has burnt and has been gone, um, they do not have access to an operable well. So, as a result, they So, as a result, they came to the city and they requested whether or not they could annex so that they would have access to water. So, essentially, that's the reasoning for their request. On the property, there is an existing multi-tenant building of approximately 9,500 square feet in floor area, and an outdoor storage area, which occupies approximately 12,000 square feet. The public hearing for the rezoning was held on September 9th before the Plan and Zoning Commission. There was no public testimony at the hearing, and the industrial zoning does conform with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the I-3 Intensive Industrial Zoning, in which the property is currently zoned as a property in the county, and is consistent with the zoning of the properties to the north, south, and west. The commission voted by vote of seven to zero and recommended in favor of the rezoning to the M2 General Manufacturing District, subject to the approval of the annexation of the property. Staff is requesting direction to place this rezoning on the October 1 city council for action, however, subject to prior city approval of the annexation agreement.
And the annexation agreement, since this is, this was a business, and obviously, there was a fire, but the annexation agreement attempts to bring up the building and surrounding area up to standards and regulations of the city of Lockport. And so, we're doing that on a piecemeal basis, not all at once, and the annexation agreement reflects that. They currently have a septic system, so they will be allowed to utilize the septic system until it no longer functions, at which time they would have to connect onto the city sewer. Obviously, as Pam said, that they are connecting on water at this point. And there are non-conforming uses and improvements on the property. The gravel access road, the gravel parking area, and the chain link fence surrounding the storage area are not, are not, do not satisfy the city regulations. They will remain at this point, but there are some caveats that they will have to upgrade those points. If the existing outdoor storage area is expanded, they would have to put in fencing, or if the other, the existing house, building is expanded, they would have to asphalt that area. Additionally, the property owner wants to put more outdoor storage, which is permitted in this use. But if he does so, then there is a five-year time limitation where he has to asphalt the parking, asphalt the gravel, and get rid of the chain link fence. If, however, he does put in this extra building, the detention for this building and the other area will have to take place at the construction of the new storage area. There is a provision that he would be allowed to apply for special use for a cell tower if he so chooses within the immediate future. And I think while he would still have to go through a special use procedure, and you'd have a right to agree or disagree, because this is obviously an industrial area, probably would be more appropriate than some of the other times when we've had special uses for towers. So, those are the kind of provisions in order to try to get this property up to the standards of the city of Lockport, and not to make it so onerous on the property owner. So, does anybody have any questions on that?
Does he have to do right now? What does he have to do?
What does he have to do?
Other than he's going to be tapping on our water, what else, what does he have to do in return? Nothing to be annexed?
Well, obviously, he eventually has to upgrade his property. If he didn't come in the city of Lockport, he may not have to had asphalt for a parking area. He might left it gravel. And the chain link fence essentially seems to be, and I don't know if it's up to Will County Code or not, but he would have to establish another fence that wouldn't be chain link or see-through. So, he has to upgrade that to our standards. And we're not requiring him to do it all at once, but on a basis, if he wants another storage building.
There's not a timeframe that he would have to do it. It's only if he builds additional buildings, then he would have to do it.
Right, expansion.
Is there cost to us to have to run a line, like through the cabinet place? It's all there, he just taps into it?
Well, I think there's a water line going through New Avenue, along New Avenue, so he doesn't have to extend it. If it didn't happen, he would be required to extend it and get recaptured from adjacent property owners. But Joe, I think the line goes across the face of his property, so he doesn't have to extend it. The sewer line, he may have to.
So, he covers the cost to run a line from his building to this line?
Right, the lateral line is his private line, and he has to put that on, and he also has to pay a tap-on fee for water.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts? Is this something we could put on a consent agenda?
Well, we can, except there's a hearing that's going to take place, so I'd probably advise not to at this point.
Okay, so we're not putting it on next meetings?
We are, because we're going to have a hearing for the annexation agreement. There's a publication.
Okay.
Already taken place. We're going to have a hearing on the, as required by law, for the annexation agreement. Then we can decide whether we want to pass the rezoning or enter into the annexation agreement.
Okay.
He's been kind of waiting for us to annex him.
Okay, so then when the time comes, we'll put it on as an action item?
And we're going to have a hearing for the Lago Vista thing.
Right, right, kind of. We're going to have two public hearings next meeting.
Okay, got it. All right, thanks, Ron.
Okay, then, this is the annexation agreement for Lockport Investments. And as we said at the last meeting, the annexation agreement hearing will take place at the second meeting in October of the city council. At that meeting, we'll act upon both the rezoning and the annexation. And the annexation agreement, you know, it's about 22 pages in length. A lot of it is boilerplate, a lot of it has been done in previous annexation agreements. I guess I should just talk about the three or four more important points for this annexation agreement, which is essentially, there was a concern about, you know, what essentially, what's a plan unit development? What does that entail? And we keep saying, you know, plan unit development will aid us and the developer, develop a plan for that area. And it's kind of spelled out in the annexation agreement, but plan unit development obviously aids the city to determine, you know, what restrictions, reasonable restrictions, should take place for manufacturing? Because when the developer comes in with a plan unit development, he, the developer has to put exactly where those buildings are. So, that, you know, when we talk about, you know, berm areas, when we talk about, you know, where the streets are going, we will be able to see and also see those areas in relationship to where he's putting the buildings. You'll have a better view and a, probably a better understanding of how those buildings versus the concerns of the citizens interreact. So, he has got to, and he agreed, he didn't, the developer didn't have any problem with abiding by a plan unit development. So, that's in. The second major change is the developer has agreed as early on, he told the planning commission, told the city council that, you know, he would, there would be no roads that would interact between the residential, the M1 that he's zoning, and the O2, which is directly east of his property. That's in the agreement. The second thing is that, that there was a concern about any trees being further taken down. In the agreement, they said, says there will be no trees taken down by the developer. Of course, you know, some trees may die, that's natural, but he, there will be no cutting of trees on the property annexed to the city of Lockport, and he will conduct a tree survey by ordinance, a tree survey, if he makes any plans to develop the property. The biggest concern in, I think of, of the property owners, and there was some difficulty, is they wanted to establish a berm area, exact location of a berm area between the residential zone property and the manufacturing zone property. Unfortunately, you know, we're not necessarily at that point to determine the exact location of that so-called berm or tree line area. And what has to happen as the engineering takes place, there's got to be determination of what that area is. Is it a flood plain? Is it a wetland? How big is the area? They haven't really, you know, scaled it and surveyed it. So, it's very difficult, and I know that the property owners wanted, you know, a specific location at this time, and to put it in the annexation agreement. That was not put in the annexation agreement, mainly because of those items that I talked about. It may very well be that the location of that area may be bigger, change, maybe different than what we actually thought. If you go into Creekside North, I think there's an area north of the Park District that is essentially a conservation area. If you look at the map, it has a lot of trees. That was, that's not because the developer of that particular subdivision didn't want it to develop it. That was because the number of trees probably was in a flood plain. So, the same thing can happen here. What I think staff and Ben, working with the developer, agreed upon is to put that in a letter that will be attached to the zoning and annexation ordinance from the mayor to the owner of Lockport Investments, telling him that this will be a consideration when the plan unit development takes place, when we're talking about this, just a kind of a reminder, not that staff and the mayor won't clearly understand the issues brought up by the property owners, but that at least there'll be some record of this, that the citizens are very concerned about this area, and we should, if the developer sells the property, the new owner will be very cognizant of that. So, there's going to be a letter attached to the ordinance, just kind of outlining this and kind of, again, describing what a plan unit development is. Also, there is a letter from the president of the homeowners' association of Creekside South that Councilmember Marinowski asked to be attached to the ordinance, just, again, stating what that association would like to see in that area. Now, some of that is given, not within the purview of this developer, but some of it should be considered, maybe not the obligation of the developer, but as kind of an overview of that area. So, that is going to be attached as well. And then finally, Alderman Smith, who's on vacation, and actually Alderman do read and do work very hard, was reading the annexation agreement on vacation in Florida, and noted his concern about, of all things, stockpiling of topsoil. So, I was in Florida vacation, and I didn't, you know, read about stockpiling of topsoil. But he was concerned that the stockpiling would cause problems, nuisances with the adjacent property owners. So, we kind of tightened up that paragraph, and the developer didn't necessarily have any objections to it. I emailed everybody. I don't know if, I just emailed them this, today, so I don't know if you guys had time to read it, but it kind of tightens up those provisions, and the developer didn't necessarily have a problem. So, we're going to add that as well. So.
Ron, if I may add a little bit about that, why, the only, the reason I, that was a concern of mine is that, it's been probably a few years ago, but there was a neighboring community that had a development, they moved all the dirt. However, all that dirt was located nearby the property, adjacent property owners. So, that dirt eventually sat over the years or time, and created a nuisance as far as the weeds. They'd be, so those weeds were blowing to the neighbors' homes. So, that's the only reason I know that that was a real concern for the homeowners, that, you know, if something starts to get developed, it doesn't finish in a timely manner, that those would be some concerns. So, that was the only reason I thought about that.
So, does anybody else have any other questions about this?
Thanks, Ron, appreciate it. We don't need to take any action on this, it's just updates. Okay, very good, thank you. All right, what about Pam, are you up?
Yes. I wanted to just give the council kind of a general economic development update. There's a variety of things going on, and it's been a while since I have. First and foremost, you're probably most aware of this, but for those in the public who might be watching or here this evening, we've had a few new businesses open. The most recent one being the Diamonds Billiards, which is located at 944 East 9th Street. It's in the Corwin's Plaza. US Bank at 1103 East 9th Street, which was the former Charter I bank, has taken over that property and opened. And Sizzles, which is located at 571 East 13th Street, took over that little kind of triangular piece. They are a gourmet burger place, and a couple members of my staff have eaten there, and if you haven't tried it, I understand that the food is very, very good. And then lastly, Stefano's Italian Market did in fact find a new owner who is looking to keep it as it was, so excited to hear that. To date, the city has had nine new businesses open for 2014, and we're hoping that, you know, we can finish out the year with a few more. On October 7th and October 8th, the city will be participating in the ICSC Chicago Deal Making Event over in Navy Pier. We will have a booth again, as we did last year, and our intentions are to meet with various brokers and possibly restaurants and retailers, who will also be in attendance at this event. And this year, we wanted to come up with something that would kind of make us stand out, and be a little more creative than just putting together a folder with a bunch of papers and marketing material. Because I've heard over the years that that's one thing they don't like, because eventually they have to get on a plane and head back to wherever they came from, and you can't really carry that much on a plane. So, what we found, there were these really cool USB business cards. They'll be for gigs, and they'll be something that we'll pass out to people that we have meetings with, and on each of these cards, there will be information about the city of Lockport. And what's nice is that it'll be something that if somebody wanted to keep and carry with them, it's not, you know, it's Lockport, but not too much Lockport, and someone could easily keep that, you know, in their wallet and use it for their other purposes. So, that Lockport would always be on their minds. So, that is something that we're putting together. In addition, Mayor has asked me to look into a brokers' event, kind of as a follow-up to ICSC. Would be about two weeks later, and hopefully, at ICSC, we would be able to hand out some invitation cards to people that we would like to follow up with, to go into more detail about the city of Lockport, and then to have them come to the community and actually experience what it's like here. If we do that, it'll probably be around the end of October. So, we're going to be meeting on Tuesday, Ben, myself, and the mayor, to discuss some details, not only about ICSC, but also how we're going to work out this brokers' event. Next, the Retail Coach, they have prepared some draft opportunity analysis now for our downtown area, similar to what they prepared in the gap analysis for the different areas closer to I-355. They've also done this now with the downtown area. I haven't gone through it completely, I just got it the other day, but what they do with the downtown is called an opportunity analysis, because it's a much smaller contained area. So, what they do is they look at a one-mile and two-mile radius in terms of where the population is going to come from to come to the downtown area. In addition to that, they have completed their second outreach to retailers, services, and developers. And good news is, is that there has been some interest by two developers, regional developers, one that specializes in new development. developers, one that specializes in new development and another one that specializes in redevelopment. So hopefully in the next coming weeks, we will have more access to their information and what they're looking to do and get together and maybe see where they might be interested in different areas of the community. Lastly, I've been working with the Chamber and their redo of the community profile. We wanted to make it different from what we've done, what they've done in the past. So we've updated the residential living section and in this new one, we're going to actually include a business, industry and transportation section. Because of all the work that we've been doing with the Retail Coach, I think that it makes sense, you know, to get the business and industry out there. We have now some, you know, wonderful industrial park opportunities with a fourth one on the way, so this is all good. In addition, we'll be including a 2014 demographics and quick facts table so that now it's more reflective of, we could have used 2010, but the 2010 numbers don't show as well as the forecast that Esri has done from a 2014 level. And then we've also included a line in there which would include the Retail Coach's customized trade area so that they can see what the average household income is and the population that would serve in our, in our area. So we're really excited about that. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, and Mayor kind of touched on it a little bit earlier, just wanted to kind of give you an update on where we're at with housing starts and housing permits. To date, we've issued 39 permits, but we have 13 pending. So it's a total of 52, which is just at, just a little under the 50% mark, but hopefully by the end of this year, we will, we'll have seen an increase of, by 50% of, of housing starts, primarily in Lago Vista in Oak Creek. But nonetheless, you know, we've seen an upsurge in those permits. So we're optimistic that 2015 with some other tentative projects that we've been meeting on and discussing, that we will see that number increase even more next year.
And Pam, one more note, that Community Guide you mentioned is going to be produced by 22nd Century Media. Each resident in the city of Lockport will receive it with a copy of Lockport Legend as soon as it's done.
And I also understand too, when I talked with Bridget Bond, that because she's involved with other newspapers that go to some of the neighboring communities, that we could elect to even have our Community Guide put in, into their newspapers as well.
I didn't know that, that's great. Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Any questions further for Pam? Thank you so much for all your work, Pam. Really appreciate it. All right. Amy, what do you got going on?
My first item is for the 17th and Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project. 17th and Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project is one of the projects that was identified in the capital improvement program for 2015. This project involves a full reconstruction of 17th Street from State to Washington and Hamilton Street from Division to 17th Street and will include water main, curb and gutter, storm sewer and landscape restoration, as well as new pavement. In, in order to have the project ready for 2015 construction, we need to get moving on engineering. Hampton, Lindsay and Renwick just finished completing and started construction on the 10th and Jefferson Reconstruction Project. So they are not currently working on the design of a project in the city of Lockport. So we requested a proposal from them for the engineering of this. Their proposal was for a not to exceed cost of $68,190 with the bid documents ready to be let by summer of 2015.
Amy, could you speak up a little bit? I'm, I'm just having trouble here.
The, the proposal was for a not to exceed cost of $68,190 with bid documents ready to be let by summer of 2015. Engineering for a reconstruction project is, of this type is typically 10 to 12% and their bid came in just less than 10% of the construction estimate. $80,000 was estimated in the CIP for engineering for this project. And this will be on the city council, unless there are questions, this will be on the city council agenda for the next meeting for approval.
Okay. Do you have any idea what month of the year the construction will take place for this project?
For this project? Well, because it's so close to the school, we-
That's why I bring it up.
Yeah, we are planning to, we're, the goal is to get it out to bid and have it start construction as soon as school is out and have it wrapped up before school starts back again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sounds good. We good for an action item then? Is that what you're requesting?
My second item on the agenda is for the replacement of the Engineering Department's 2001 Dodge Ram truck. This pickup truck has kind of not been in use for the last couple of years because the Engineering Department only had a couple of members. And in the last couple of years, we've added to our crew two engineering techs, one is part-time. Nonetheless, when that part-time employee is here, our vehicle, it, the vehicles that we have available, we only have three functioning vehicles right now. The 2001 Dodge truck has some major issues that went to the Dodge dealer recently and they can't figure out what's wrong with it. The Public Works Department had $158,000 planned this year for the replacement of a snowplow truck and due to the time that it takes to order and get in a snowplow truck, they are unable to get that purchase completed before the end of the fiscal year. So there's additional money in the budget to get this purchase made. We got the suburban purchase co-op price from Curry Motors and we also got two additional quotes for this, for the purchase of this vehicle. I am requesting to replace the truck with a 2015 Ford Escape instead. Right now, the Engineering Department has four trucks. The last truck that we purchased was 2006 Ford Ranger that we purchased that Bob Weir drives. And in order to transport all of the equipment that we need to transport for the Engineering Department, it's best to have a covered cab. And so when we purchased that vehicle, we also ordered a cab to enclose the back of it so that we could transport the wheel and the laser level and the GPS data collector and all of that equipment. So because there are, Ford does not make the smaller Ford Ranger pickup truck anymore and the Escape has a hatch in the back and you can fold the seats down and there's plenty of room in there to not only transport the equipment, but when we have a conference or a meeting to go to, we'd actually have room in the vehicle for more than two people to go to the meeting. So I'm requesting that we replace that larger size Ford Dodge Ram truck with a Ford Escape. So if there-
This vehicle is also in our plan, our multi-year vehicle replacement plan for 2016, so we're just moving it up a little bit and we just won't be spending that money at that time.
Amy, do you need emergency lighting in that? You know, if you're out at a site and, you know, it's, there's traffic or what have you?
We, we do, we do have emergency lighting, flashers in all of our vehicles, the little strobe flashers in all of our vehicles. It won't be installed as part of this purchase, but I believe Rusty installed the ones in my, in the current vehicles that we have, so we can just order those parts and Rusty can install those at a later time.
Okay.
So-
All right, everybody good? Any questions? All right, we'll put it on for an action item. Thank you. All right, last, Joe.
Real quick, this is just a matter of information for council. The Public Works Department's going to be installing GPS in 14 of our vehicles. So the GPS system will improve operations to better assist personnel and data collection and routine maintenance for snow removal, street sweeping, chipping, things like that. It will also aid in fuel costs, dispatch ability to find the nearest vehicle in an emergency and many other reports that should help the department with a more streamlined approach. The, we brought in, we talked to the people from Verizon, we also talked to Precise. We're going to go with Senovia. The initial cost will be only $3,038 and then $17 per truck for the 14 trucks will be the fee for annual cost of $2,856. We can add on as we go. This will get the program going, get staff up to speed on how it operates, and then we can add yearly as we go as we get comfortable with the system.
The GPS will be able to allow us certain reports about, for example, customer service gets a call and says, "The snowplow hasn't been by my house tonight." And then we can look back at that data and say, "Well, it was there at 6:00 PM and it was there at 8:00 PM." So this will really help us in dealing with a lot of customer inquiries and where our services are being used. Our plan is to roll these out to tree service equipment and sweepers and as we continue to, to ramp up the software on our equipment.
Can we connect the GPS to our website so the residents could go straight to the website?
We can do that in an internal, we will have internal-
Watch that little Dodge go around the map.
There are software components that we'll have for that, for interior staff, and we can possibly share that with members of council, but I don't think we want to make that public quite yet.
It'll make all the employees paranoid. Again, I don't think that's the reason, but like Ben brought up, I think it justifies kind of what we are doing and then everybody has an idea where we've been, what we're doing, things like that.
Hopefully we can find some efficient ways.
It's not to spy on employees.
All right. Are we good? We could put this on, yeah, Consent Agenda is good? Thank you, thanks, Joe. All right.
Mayor, I have just a couple of new business items, if that's all right, that weren't previously on the agenda. We have Elizabeth Belcaster here in the audience with us tonight. Some of you may have noticed, or maybe you haven't noticed yet, but you probably will. We have a TV show filming in, in the city of Lockport in regards to resistance pro wrestling and we have an advocate for them here tonight. Invite her up to come to the, to the, to microphone and talk a little bit about the taping and the impacts of Lockport. And, and then there'll be some sponsorship information and things that we're going to share with you at a later time as well, so.
Fine, thanks for coming out, Elizabeth.
Thank you for having us. I, I, you know, we had a PowerPoint presentation that I forwarded to Mr. Benson, but we're, we're really not going to get into that tonight. I want to introduce you to the owners of the company. This is Jacque and Gabriel Barron. We had a block party the other night that I think some of you attended. And as we got, talking to some of the council members, we talked about the economic impact that this will have on the community long-term and short-term. So what I want to do is just kind of give you an introduction to the company, who we are, the history of the families that both live in Lockport that are Lockport residents. This is the AMC channel that's airing and taping right now in Lockport. So I'm going to let Jacque and Gabe come up and give you a little history on the company, where they foresee it going, and then I want to talk a little bit about economic impact on the community. So if you guys want to come up and talk about the company?
Okay. Basically, we started the company here in Lockport in August of 2011. Our first show we ran in November 2011 in the city of Chicago. Our partner is our creative director, basically the one who writes all the storylines and everything, is Billy Corgan from the Smashing Pumpkins. He's been spending a lot of time here in Lockport, he likes the city a lot, he's a big fan of the Vegan Cafe. He's put it over on Twitter and everything and he actually ate there on Saturday as well. We're looking at our first full event, our, our anniversary event, it's like our WrestleMania in wrestling terms. It's going to be here in November 7th, which is a Friday, at the Taft School, correct? It's a fundraiser for the school, which is a big thing for us, it's very important to us. He's got two kids right now in, in school here in Lockport. I have a daughter who'll be attending school in a few years too. During the day, we're going to be having one of our positive outreach programs, which is where we have a bunch of the wrestlers in, Billy's here ourselves as well, talking to the kids how, about inspiring them to not only stick in school, but also that everybody has a place in the world, everybody has a place in a company like ours. Just because you're not an athlete doesn't mean that you're not an important, going to play an important role in whatever you do. It's a very positive speech, the kids get, like it a lot because we kind of talk real down-to-earth with them and everything. We've done several of these events as well in the city of Chicago and all over and they've done really well. We're going to do that in the morning and then that evening we'll have the full show. We're going to bring in a national name talent we're working on acquiring right now. AMC is going to be there, obviously the camera crew filming the whole thing. If we want to have a real good outreach with the, with the village and try to incorporate as many businesses as we can through the Chamber of Commerce, as well as just a good outreach with everybody as well, as far as the city council goes.
Real quick, I want to thank everybody for helping put together the block party. Ben Benson was very instrumental there, Darren, Police Chief Fleming, put it together in a couple of weeks, had the event Saturday and-
Just like that, it got done.
I don't know how it went off without a hitch because we had a day before show, but Darren was there and I'm sure he can tell you, there wasn't an issue, problem, everybody had a really good time. AMC loved it, they actually came out themselves, usually it's just a production company, but they were there and they loved everything about it, really just showed the community off exactly how we wanted to do it. So the more we can get them out here for filmings and the more outside-the-box thinking, the more we can really show off what Lockport is and as we keep putting it over as a blue collar community and a hard-working, family-oriented city. And that's, if we can keep doing that and working together. And thank you so much, guys, for your support because it's a lot to deal with, I'm sure, and helping us with paperwork and dealing with networks is a lot to do. And you guys have been doing great, so thank you very much for your help.
So Darren and I were talking at the block party about some of what the long-term and the short-term economic effect it'll have on this community. And I think it's important that what, what a lot of people are seeing right now is just the bits and pieces of the camera crews being in specific spaces. But again, these are two Lockport residents and Lockport citizens who are taping and have brought this into the community. Long-term, once the floodgates open, and I call them floodgates because there's a reason we call them floodgates, once the television show gets on air, this community looks very different. This brings visitors to your community, it brings goodness to the businesses that are already here, and we want to engage the community and the chamber and the businesses that are here with the blessing of the city council, obviously. We had a long conversation about that, that part of it and I think that, I work as, I'm a sponsor for the company. I've been a sponsor for the company for two years, right? As long as they've opened up their doors because I believe in it. The positive outreach programs that they've put together, that was simply an approach that Jacque and Gabe and Billy Corgan came up with together, that if we're going to do something good and we have the blessings of getting our own reality show, we want to show how we can give back to the community. But the reality of that, the real reality of that, is that most of these wrestlers and most of their production people all have full-time jobs just like your working community. They come in, they do their bits with the wrestling company, but they all bring value to their own communities. And that's the messaging that I think we want to get across to everybody, especially to the Lockport community. Filming and taping is now through December for the first season. I believe that they're going to start airing in, in February or March of next year. So, you know, I'm happy to come in, I have a consulting firm, I do training deplacement programs for military veterans, I work with the Department of Defense. This is not my space, but because I'm here and a sponsor for the company, I'm using the resources that I have. The Jesse White Award was an award that they just got recently and introducing them to legislators and communities of what I would normally do if I was in business and in the business that I'm in. We know the value of having the blessing of the city council. I'm happy to come and sit down and I think what we'd like to do next and what we're asking of you is if we could set up a meeting with your Chamber of Commerce. Let's get creative and define a space where this is really good for this community, where the messaging is good to the students, to the children of the community, those that came out. Darren, you know, I mean, it's surprising when you see it as a wrestling company, how family-oriented this really is. And I think that you were surprised, maybe not so surprised, but it really is that field. Jacque's children, Gabe's children, my children, my son, they're all very much a part of the company. And I think that's something that we want to see flow into the community, but we also want to see, at, at the early stages of it, before it hits television, that we come up with some creative thinking on Lockport's behalf and on the business's behalf to make sure that they're engaged with it. So, any questions?
I, I agree with what Elizabeth said. I was first contacted by Jacque, I don't know, two months ago, two and a half months ago, and, and my first thought was, "Oh no, I don't know anything about wrestling," which means it has to be bad. And so we, we met and, and I, and I immediately sent him to, to Ben and to, to the mayor. And I did attend on Saturday and, and it was fun, it wasn't any, it wasn't what I thought it was going to be, it was just fun. It was great, there must have been 75 to 100 kids there, they all got into it, the adults enjoyed it. The wrestlers could not have been nicer, gracious with their time. Billy was wonderful, to the point where it was no big deal that he was there after, he was there for seven hours. So this is something that I would hope that the rest of the council and, and city staff, I would hope we'd be able to go ahead and put our heads together and really, if we can go ahead and get a three to four month jump on the first air date and, and, and get Lockport ready for this and get the Chicagoland ready for this, I, I think this is going to really help with the whole branding that we've been talking about for the last year. And- branding that we've been talking about for the last year and might even spur some interest in some other commercial development in the future.
I agree. I think it will. And I think, you know, I hate to use the space of, not hate to use the space, but if you think about some of the higher-profile individuals in the townships that they come from, the Jackson family or other individuals, that's a bad example. But kind of in that space, the VIPs, you know, to the Barron families, all day long in the taping is the Lockport community. That's where they come from. They want to make sure that Lockport is proud of it. And I think having your inputs and the value of that prior to the television taping coming out is going to be really important. And really, that's what we're here to say today, is that we appreciate your feedback. We want your feedback. We want to engage the communities. Jacque and Gabe are very, very busy taping right now, so the time pieces of that are a little bit harder than it was three months ago. I can say that for sure. But again, as a supporter and a sponsor for the company and as somebody that brings resources to the table at whatever level I can, the best resources we have are the ones that are right in the room right here. So I think if we can collaboratively sit down, have a conversation and talk about possibly bringing this to the chamber, doing an event with the chamber, a resistance pro event with the chamber and kind of doing the PowerPoint presentation, showing what a sponsorship looks like. And the other important thing, too, I just gave the mayor a copy of the sponsorship packages. A year from now, when this becomes Duck Dynasty, these sponsorships are going to look really different. And we haven't opened those gates up to everybody just yet, but the packages that they have now are very small and they can be customized and personalized to the communities that are here. And I mean that. I mean Haley Barron, Jacque's wife, works very, very hard. Gabe's wife is an attorney. She works on the contracts to make sure that we're personalizing some of that stuff to fit the economy package of the person that wants to come in and sponsor. All of that can be built up together. You may have more suggestions once you, as a city council, review that or have some other ideas on how we can do that with the community. But that's an important piece of it, too. Those numbers, they will change once the show hits, especially if the show is a hit. But the Lockport community is very important to us. We want to make sure we're customizing some of that. So that's part of the pieces that I'm working on with the company and stuff that we can get creative with, whether it's via conference calls or face-to-face meetings. We're happy to do that. So I think on behalf of Gabe and Jacque and myself, I again want to thank you guys for your time and all very excited to be here, right?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited about this as well. It's one of the reasons why I love Lockport. It has such a great eclectic mix of so many different things and I think it's why I love living here. So yes, anything we can do to help you or just, you know, make sure you keep in contact with us and yeah, we look forward to things.
Okay. Terrific. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
I heard a great description of professional wrestling to me the other day. It was a soap opera for men.
Yeah.
That was great. All right. Any other new business?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I've just got a verbal update on a support letter request from the Metro Mayor's Caucus in concert with the Rail Safety Week, in particular rail tank car safety. You know, the rail industry's been under scrutiny since there's been a few tragic fatal derailments and things. There was one in Cherry Valley back in 2011 where there's some fatalities. And so what they ask everyone to do is send support letters in regards to making sure that any of these hazardous materials that are being shipped through the town, as you know, we have two main lines of transportation here with several at-grade rail crossings. And we want to make sure that the new guidelines being proposed by the Federal Pipeline and Hazard Materials Safety Administration include a couple of things. One, they got to make sure that there's emergency preparation response protocols for local agencies and that they provide funding for that to those local agencies so we can learn about these things without costs. And then secondly, that these tank cars that are hauling these liquids and whether it's a gasoline, a diesel fuel, corrosive, you know, flammable liquids, oils, crude oils, those must be held to the higher, highest standards for those train cars. So what I'll do is we've crafted this letter in concert with the Metro Mayor's Caucus. We'll have Steve sign and we'll send everyone a copy of it just so you can see the ins and outs of these different types of technologies. And we just wanted to bring it to your attention with the Rail Safety Week that this was something that I think everyone in the community would be supporting safer rail, especially of hazardous cargoes.
Okay. Anything else? You know, one thing that I want to kind of wrap up, you know, the volunteer thing from earlier, is, you know, our upcoming newsletter, I want to kind of do a big call-out for new volunteers. It's a tremendous amount of work, I mean, when you do these projects. I remember, you know, watching my wife, how much effort she put into taking that summer art series from ground zero and bringing it up and, you know, the stresses, the hours and all the things that are involved in it. But at the same time, it's, you know, when things come off and they do well, that, you know, it's very rewarding as well. But, you know, I want to do a big call for volunteers. I mean, if I, you know, can, in the next newsletter, you know, if we can get 50 more people to come out and, you know, get part of the, whether it's the Food Pantry Summer Art Series, you know, Old Canal Days committees, it'll make it, take, just to spread the burdens around, it'll just make it so much easier and it'll, you know, have even greater success. And the more people that buy into things, it's, once again, it's the more attachment we have to our community and the more pride we take. So it's certainly an initiative I'm going to put out in the next newsletter for a call for volunteers. So, all right. So any open floor comments tonight? See a couple of faces out there. Anybody got anything to say? Okay. All right. Why don't we take five and we'll be back at 8:20. So can I have a motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Marionowski, all in favor? Okay, can I have a, we're going to start city council meeting. Let's just do a quick roll call again, Jack.
Sure.
Pareda?
Here.
Marionowski?
Here.
Deskin?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Colerally?
Here.
Capitano?
Here.
Seven present. All right, thanks. Can I have a motion to have a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. On the consent agenda for today is the regular city council meeting minutes, the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. We've got the payroll from last month, approval of bills as presented, the 2014 October monthly meeting calendar. We have the Resolution 14080, which was the property casualty and workers' compensation insurance brokerage bid. We have Phase Two pre-treatment program, which was Resolution 14077. So can I have a motion to approve a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next thing on the agenda? Personnel requests?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We just have a brief executive session request for personnel reasons. And then I also wanted to give you all just a verbal update about our budget process and timeline. I did email you all today. Hopefully you've received it and we want to be following, we've already begun, I guess I should say, our budget approvals and meeting with the departments. And we wanted to present this to council on October 15th. We will publish a hearing on October 20th in the Herald News. On November 19th, we would have our public hearing for the budget and we would welcome questions from the public and city council, including a presentation on the tax levy with the Committee of the Whole. On November 24th, we would publish those public hearings for the tax levy in the Herald News if required. We doesn't necessarily have to publish that if you're not asking for anything over 5%. And then we're looking for approval of the budget on December 3rd and the final approval on December 17th. So it's obviously condensed this fall. This is a new fiscal year for us, for the calendar year of January 2015 through December 2015. We sat through all the budget sessions with all the council members last year. We weren't planning to do that this year. We'd be happy to meet with anybody individually if they have additional questions once we send out those materials. But when we sat with you last year, we talked about the short budget 14 and projections for 15. Nothing has really changed that significantly, although each department is starting to meet with me. Maggie, we'll have a new finance director coming in, so there may be some changes and we'll make sure we highlight those to you and communicate to you what those are. And again, we'd be happy to meet with anyone who wants to sit down with it once they receive it and they have questions. But again, I emailed that to you and we just wanted to make sure that with a new staff person coming in, we want to make sure they get a chance, opportunity to take a look at this with us. And we still have to meet certain deadlines with hearing dates and things and we've double-checked those and we should be able to meet everything just fine.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Okay. Pam, what do you got?
Yes, the city of Lockport will be receiving three bike racks through the Illinois Scenic Byways Bicycle Rack Program. This was due to some federal monies that were allocated to the Illinois Route 66 Heritage Project. The identified locations for these bike racks would be at the South Public Landing, the Community Development Center, and the Gaylord Building. The bike racks were originally scheduled to be available this past spring. However, due to a delay in production, we did not receive them and it's been postponed to this fall. The local cost of the bike racks are an in-kind match contribution, which would be based on the pickup of the bike racks and the city's costs for installation, including labor and materials. However, as part of the program requirements, the city must execute the attached Illinois Scenic Byways Bicycle Rack legal agreement. This needs to be executed and presented to them at the time of pickup and it essentially acknowledges the city's ownership of these bike racks and responsibility for them and then also indemnifies the organization after the bike racks have been picked up. So staff respectfully request that the council motion to authorize the city administrator to execute this agreement.
Add a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Marionowski, seconded by Alderman Turner. Do we need to do a vote or can we just do all in favor here? I don't think there's any money. Am I, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. What else you got, Pam?
Okay, the next item is as of July 1st, as the council is aware, the city hired an in-house building official. Prior to doing so, we relied on a consulting firm to perform these duties, including the use of their equipment. This is a request to purchase a 1-2014 Ford F-150 XL pickup truck for use by the city's building official. In the current stub year budget, $16,000 was budgeted under the capital projects for the purchase of this small pickup truck. Since July 1st, the department has relied on a reused 2001 Ford Taurus sedan, which is in poor condition and very much not practical on construction sites. Shortly after the approval of the budget, staff did find a vehicle through the suburban purchasing cooperative. And since the vehicle was under budget, $15,864, and to take advantage of this cooperative pricing, which would only go through September, as well as to accommodate the production time, which was 10 to 14 weeks, staff with the permission of the city administrator did order the vehicle. The vehicle is scheduled to arrive sometime between September 23rd and October 23rd and therefore, staff is presenting to the council this evening a request to authorize the purchase of this vehicle so that when it does arrive that we can go and pick it up. We did research online pricing of the same vehicle through two different dealers. One of the dealers did not even have any of the 2014s and the other dealer had special pricing, which was significantly above what we were getting through the cooperative.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does this have heat and air conditioning? It seems like such a low-brow.
It does. Okay, good.
Not much else.
It's even an automatic.
It was a good deal. All right. So can I have a?
Yeah, I'm sorry for not checking with you earlier on this, so I apologize first of all. But would it be in our best interest to maybe go for the four-by-four? Is that seem to be a little bit more a useful tool for the city as a whole if we went four-by-four instead? Just asking. So I don't know.
Well, I mean, when it was time to pick a vehicle, I mean, I did work with the building official to see what he needed. If he needed something just powerful is what our public works, people drive, or whether, you know, something on a smaller scale would be sufficient. And he felt that it was, he was pretty comfortable with this type of vehicle.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Again, sorry. Apologize.
No problem.
Okay, then. Do we have a roll call, Jack? Yeah. Pareda?
Yes.
Marionowski?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colerally?
Yes.
Capitano?
Yes.
Seven years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, Amy.
Okay, my first item on the agenda is for the McGregor and North Reconstruction Project selection of consultant. I believe we went through this at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, so I'm going to skip straight to the recommendation. The recommendation is to, is that the city enter into an agreement with James J. Bennett and Associates for the Phase One engineering for the McGregor and North Reconstruction Project in the amount of $83,552.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Pareda. Any discussion? Jack, can you roll call, please?
Sure. Pareda?
Yes.
Marionowski?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colerally?
Yes.
Capitano?
Yes.
Seven years.
Okay, my second item on the agenda is for the Highlands Lift Station recommendation for selection of consultant. This item was also discussed at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, so I'm going to skip to the recommendation again. We recommend that the city enter into an agreement with Strand Associates for the engineering services to complete plans and specifications for the Highlands Lift Station in the amount of $104,800.00.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Marionowski. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, Jack? Pareda?
Yes.
Marionowski?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colerally?
Yes.
Capitano?
Yes.
Seven years. Motion passed.
Okay, my third item on the agenda is the 2014 pavement patching project. On September 10th, the city of Lockport received four bids for the 2014 pavement patching project. This project will consist of pavement removal and patching of various streets throughout the city. The bid was opened and read publicly. The lowest bid in the amount of $88,000 was submitted by Austin Tyler Construction. The engineer's estimate for this contract was $68,000. The most recent unit price for a Class D patch was $20 a square yard for the Farrow Road patching contract. This contract included a larger amount and was four-inch binder patch only. The estimate for this contract was based upon a unit cost of five-inch Class D patch with two-inch surface of $25 a square yard for patches seven, greater than seven feet wide and 35 for patches less than 70 feet wide. The unit price received for the 2014 patching project was $44 a square yard. A map of the locations was included in your packet. In order to expedite the project and save valuable time, we came straight to the council for this rather than waiting for the items to be presented at workshop. Our recommendation is to increase the cost of, or the amount that we award to the contractor for this so that we can get more patching done this year and then reduce the amount that we budget in next year's budget for patching. So my recommendation is to award a contract to Austin Tyler Construction up to an adjusted amount of $130,000 to complete patching throughout the city.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any questions?
I'd just like to make, I might, you know, talking a little bit to Amy about this, I know there's some decisions that were hard to make and of course, there's a lot of decisions to make out there as far as which ones to do. So I appreciate Amy putting that hard work and making this all happen and trying to make a plan to do some repairs to get us through. And there were some areas that are really bad. So thanks, Amy, for your work on that.
You're welcome. There, and another thing that I want you to understand is currently we have Public Works out doing some patching right now in locations. There's locations that will be reconstructed next year. Summit and Runyon, Seventh and Washington, 17th and Hamilton, all of those projects that will be reconstructed next year. We do have Public Works out doing some patching in those areas to make sure that those areas will hold together before next summer's reconstruction projects. Once we go through and we mark all of the areas that are on the list that was included in this package and we utilize all the funds that are available to get as much of the patching through the contract as we can, if there are any outstanding areas that we didn't get to with this to with this contract, we will be putting together another map to send over to Public Works to see if Public Works can go in and get some patching done in some of these other locations. We want to try to take care of as many of these spots as possible. If there are any areas that we don't get to this fall, we will still have $50,000 remaining in the budgeted amount for patching that we can add to the resurfacing contract for next summer to go through and add some patches in some other locations.
I want to thank Public Works also because Seventh and Washington was terrible and patching only lasts so long. The state uses cold patch, which is temporary. So, I mean, the fact that we're doing that, because, I mean, it was so terrible, so that, and leading up to the reconstruction will be crazy.
So can I have a roll call?
Yes. Peretta?
Yes.
Marionowski?
Yes.
Van Damier?
Hope.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Here.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colerally?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion passed.
Okay, my final item on the agenda is for the 2014 pavement crack sealing project. On September 10th, the city also received two bids for the 2014 pavement crack sealing project. This project will consist of routing and crack sealing of various streets throughout the city. The bid was opened and read publicly. The low bid in the amount of $69,200 was submitted by Patriot Pavement Maintenance from Des Plaines, Illinois. The other bid that the city received was some CA advance from Wacarosa, Indiana, in the amount of $77,200. The engineer's estimate for this contract was $60,000. We got a lower price actually per linear, or per pound of crack sealing than the last time we did a crack sealing project in 2013, so that's good news. We included a map of the locations in your packet for reference. We're going to try to get as many of these areas cracked sealed as possible and if we don't get to them, then we can add some more to next year's project. Most of these areas were areas that were resurfaced in the last couple of years or reconstructed in the last couple of years and this is the optimal time to get the crack sealing done for these areas. The recommendation is that a contract be awarded to Patriot Pavement Maintenance in the amount of $69,200.
So moved.
Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any questions? Okay, can I have a roll call, Jack?
Sure. Peretta?
Yes.
Marionowski?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Colerally?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion passed.
All right, thanks, Amy. Any new business?
Yes. Jack didn't get back to me on this one and this is about the electric supplier. I've been getting phone calls and I've had, you know, questions about should we go with this or when is it going to happen? And first, I'm, you know, was told, we were told that Verdi contract went till the end of November and we would stay with Verdi. Now, we got a letter, I assume everybody did, I did, saying that, ComEd, saying that we received notice that your electric supplier of choice is being changed to Home Field Energy. This change will take place within two business days of October 1st, 2014. Now, this is like the second time I've kind of brought this up and had, was told that no, it won't be. And then I get this letter from ComEd saying that it's going to be within two days of October 1st. And I'd just like to know if you found out, just what's going on so that I can give people answers.
Yeah, are you referring to my email yesterday? Did you see that?
The one that you said something about contact, that somebody would want to see this letter, a Decot?
Yes, essentially.
And I said I didn't know who that was.
Sure, sure.
But I have a copy here if you'd like it. I don't know.
Yeah, so essentially what's going to happen with this is there is going to be a transition because how billing cycles work is there basically, it's pretty wide range. So some people, your billing cycle for November is going to start in, or for the, that you get in November is going to start October 15th. Other people, it goes all the way to November 30th. It's a very wide range because they don't, you know, they don't do the meter reading all at once. It depends on when you set up your bill. You know, some people did do it mid-month, some people started up, you know, on the fifth of month, you know, 17 years ago. So it all essentially is on how your cycle is. So what's going to happen is there are some people, and it is pretty small, who they will be rolled over in, they will not be going to ComEd. They will be rolled over into Home Field. It will be, you know, before others and others will be later. So essentially, it's just how it has to happen. There's no organic way that, the goal of when they set the contract was so that nobody goes to ComEd, but that everyone will eventually transition into Home Field. But the problem is that there's no way we could say everyone will go December 1st because a whole bunch of people, you know, their bills don't come on a very flat and it's not the same time. So those people will have an increased bill if they were on Verde and they go to Home Field, but that'll balance out with the people who are never on Verde who are going to our new cycle of Home Field. They'll have a less bill than, you know, otherwise they would have.
Yes, but our contract with Verdi does run till the end of November, correct? So why, why wouldn't this take place for us in the November billing cycle instead of the October billing cycle?
And essentially, it does because how the billing cycles work is they're always a couple of months behind. So essentially, our bill, it's essentially, that's what the cycle is. So what will happen is that's why some people, their cycle is, you know, a couple of months back. So essentially, it'll transition, but it's going to be, it's not going to be, you know, perfectly clean for everyone, but we do have some people with Verde. Now currently, what we're doing is we are, our representatives at Decot Energy, they are the consulting firm that was hired by Will County Electric. They are currently trying to push and petition to see if we can keep people on all the way until the end. But the problem is, is most, they don't have to honor that essentially. They can allow people to transition in when their bill cycle comes up. And there's probably no reason that they would, you know, allow that because for them, they want to get out of this contract right now, essentially. So because, you know, for them at that low rate, it's great for the consumer, but it's, right now, it's killing them. So, you know, it's just kind of how it's transitioning. For some people, you know, they'll start Home Field a little sooner than others and others a little later. On average, if it is, if you are one of the early rollovers, it'll mean your bill might go up a couple of dollars for a month, so.
Okay, so there's no, you just have to watch your bill within the next two months to see?
Yeah, and essentially, that's.
When you're switched.
Yes, and you'll get, you'll get switched. Most people won't notice it until November, but just, you know, when their cycle comes up, you'll get, you'll get moved over.
Aren't most people already in Lockport with Verdi since that was our, what we went with?
I don't know what the figures are. We've been dealing with ComEd and sharing those account numbers and things back and forth, actually even as recently as this week. You know, I think majority of them are, but, you know, it's unfortunately, when you jump into these large group aggregations with multiple communities, not all dates all lined up right. So I think, you know, ultimately, you'll end up, some people could have about a half of a month that's actually the new rate, which is a little bit higher than their previous rate, but going forward.
At least I know that, not to say that it won't run till the end, we won't be necessarily on Verde till the end of November.
Right.
It will switch most likely before that.
For a lot of people, it will be.
Yeah.
It's just some, some are early cycles. And on, and that's why, you know, Decot wants to see what the Excel, or not Excel, sorry, it's Minnesota's, what the ComEd bill says or the letter you got because they didn't receive that. But essentially, yeah, so I can, I'll pass it on to them just so that they can see. But essentially, it's coming out just as notification. ComEd's doing this throughout the state because they have, you know, every community has the option to have done this if they pass the referendum. So you have hundreds and they're not keeping track of what, they don't know what our contract is. They don't know when Verde is coming up or when Home Field isn't, whereas, you know, our consultants do. So that they, I mean, they're pretty confident about it. So they said that this could just be a notification to switch, so.
Okay, thank you.
We should be able to hopefully at least report back to you when we, A, when we know more about the specific information, but also what the total numbers were when, when this all plays out over the next couple of months and how many, how many people it affected and we'll report back to you.
All righty. Anything else for new business? Okay. Well, can I have a, I guess a motion to go into executive session?
Recessed.
All right. Nobody else wants to do executive session?
I'll make a motion to recess the city council meeting.
To go into executive session? All right, so we're going to do that motion instead. Second. Seconded by Alderman Marionowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll give it a couple of minutes to clear all the gallery.